All right, good evening. Called the Wenatchee City Council Special Meeting in order. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to a couple veterans if they come up and help lead us, that'd be great.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you for being here. Roll call, we have everybody here. Great night, okay. At this point, we'll do citizens' comments. It's a period of provided opportunity to members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. We do have a couple of public hearing items, so if it's regarding that, if you can tell the public hearing. And we just ask you to come up, state your name and address, and we limit to three minutes. Who would like to come up first? I know we have a couple people here.
I'll start.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Tracy Gell. I live at 1708 Skyline Drive.
And that's Wenatchee, of course. I'm here out of a concern for safety on Skyline Drive. There's people that speed, and I've lived there about five years, and since I've been there, they, there's been two accidents that took out a power pole just down the street from me. And last spring, somebody drove their car in a ditch. And, yeah, and it's, and there's a lot of walkers, and so I'm really concerned about people that walk. They walk in the morning, they walk in the evening, when it's dark, even this time of year. So, speed is really hazard, and I, I live right across the street from the, the speed monitor, so I can sit out there and watch it. Pretty much everybody speeds, and, but it's the, the people that speed at forty miles an hour plus, and that's, I don't think that's uncommon, but I don't have any statistics, but that's a major concern. So, please, find a solution to the speeding, and I'm advocating for you to find a solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Tracy and I went to school together, I'm gonna throw that out there.
Good evening, I'm Suzanne Hartman, 1715 Skyline Drive, across the street from Tracy in Wenatchee. And before I get started in what I'm really here for, I'd just like to thank the city for the work that you've done up on Skyline Drive overlook, and the actions that you've taken to put in those gates. They've worked, the bad behavior seems to be cutting down, and one thing I might recommend is now that it's getting dark earlier, you should probably close those gates before nine thirty. So, moving on to other issues on Skyline Drive. In early May of this year, I invited all of you over to our house for coffee and to observe firsthand the excessive speeds on Skyline. No one came, but Councilmember Quavis did call me, thank you, and even though we aren't in your district. The Director of Wenatchee Public Works did come to our house, and he observed the constant speeding as it was displayed on the speed monitoring signs that are, sign that's right in front of our house. He promised to look into it. I'm providing for you some email exchanges that occurred subsequently regarding the speeding issue, and I've highlighted some key points. Of note, I don't have a lot of time, of note, are the circumstances around the June seventeenth City of Wenatchee Public Safety Meeting. While we had been told that the speed monitoring signs were no longer recording data, a miracle occurred, and the data became available in time for the committee meeting. The only problem is that data was flawed, inaccurate, and simply useless. But this data was used by the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police to give a presentation to the committee, and the resulting recommendation was to do nothing, except for another speed study, which was supposed to happen in September, but no study has occurred. In nearly ten years, no speeding tickets have been issued on Skyline or Red Apple Road. You can do something about this. The state law allows you, the City Council, to pass legislation to acquire photo-enforcing cameras that will identify a car that is speeding and issue a ticket. Other municipalities have used this successfully, and the, the revenue generated from those ticket issued are, is far in excess of the equipment installed. And I've talked to police departments in several of those cities. In closing, Chief Renfield commented the day before the Public Safety Committee meeting that the neighbors seem to want a private road. The neighbors on the petition I am submitting to you don't want a private road, we want the speed limit enforced. It is a matter of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, Mayor, and members of the Wenatchee City Council. My name is Tara Shoddleworth, and I'm here to express concern over an employment action made by the Wenatchee School District that I believe was handled in an unprofessional and unjust matter. Until recently, I served as a certified substitute teacher in secondary education for the district. Yesterday, November fifth, Foothill Middle School Principal Craig Allen met with me after several, several seventh grade students accused me of being racist in, in a classroom. I shared my account of the events and expressed that to preserve positive relationships with students, it might be in my best interest to step away from teaching from foothills. Mr. Allen suggested that I continue to substitute teach at foothills, and that it might allow students to see me in a different light. He stated that a classified paraprofessional would observe the classroom alongside me. Today, November sixth, Kelly Lopez, Executive Director of Human Resources, informed me that I would be removed from all certified substitute positions, and that my certification file had been deactivated. This decision was made without any prior meeting, explanation, or opportunity to respond. Such abrupt action, taken without due process or professional communication, was both unfair and inappropriate. Beyond teaching, I am actively involved in developing after-school programming, and in working towards establishing a teen center in Wenatchee to provide safe, supportive space for young people. My dedication to this community and for youth guides my work, making this decision especially disheartening. I understand that these matters are typically handled by the school board, but I urge the City Council to encourage transparency, fairness, and professionalism in how much on such matters are addressed. Educators and students alike deserve a system built on respect, communication, and accountability. This has everything to do with one of our students yesterday, very bright girl, they were taking a test, and she was one of the first students that handed in her test. She only speaks Spanish, and her written part was only written in Spanish, and I empowered her to speak, to become bilingual. And because I only speak English, the way I said it, she didn't understand it, and so the students assumed I was saying something racist. We do not have a national language within our country, but I'm going to assume, assume that our Hispanic parents are bringing their kids to school to learn English, so that they can thrive within our country. You just lost a really powerful educator that cares over something that was not handled Thank you.
Since I'm here already. Josh Tarr, I live at 946 Highland Drive, I also work down at 126 North Wenatchee Avenue. I'm putting on my Wenatchee Downtown Association hat right now, and I just want to ask, who's been downtown Wenatchee this summer and seen how beautiful the flowers are? I just wanted to say, thank you. Thank you for your partnership with us, helping us sustain and create such a beautiful location. Your partnership is absolutely invaluable, so, that's it. Thank you for creating such a beautiful spot for us.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else?
We have two people online.
Two people online? And do they want to have a public comment? How do you do that, Tammy? Do you, like, talk to them, or?
For those that are on Zoom, Anne, do you wish to make a public comment? Garner, do you wish to make a public comment?
I'm, I'm assuming no.
Okay.
Not unmuted.
I'm gonna go with no, and we'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the agenda voucher of minutes from previous meetings, and to approve Resolution number 2025-39, appointing Monica Lopez as a voting member to the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Chelan County and the City of Wenatchee to fill an unexpired three-year term.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Rodenstein, and a second by Councilmember Atkinson, for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings, and approve Resolution number 2025-39, appointing Monica Lopez as a voting member of the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Chelan County and the City of Wenatchee to fill an unexpired three-year term. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna do some presentations. Councilmember Yor, you have that one?
I do. Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas on November eleventh of each year, we honor our veterans, men and women, who have served our country in honor, with honor and distinction. On Veterans Day, we show them our deepest thanks. Their sacrifices have helped secure more than two centuries of American progress, and their legacy affirms that no matter what confronts us or what trials we face, there is no challenge we cannot overcome, and our best days are still ahead. Whereas although much has changed since Americans first took up arms to advance freedom's cause, the spirit that moved our forbears in same spirit has defined each generation of our service members. Our men and women in uniform have taught us about strength, duty, devotion, resolve, cornerstones of a commitment to protect and defend that has kept our country safe for over two hundred years. In war and in peace, their service has been selfless, and their accomplishments have been extraordinary. Whereas even after our veterans take off their uniform, they never stop serving. Many apply the skills and experience they deployed on the battlefield to a life of service here at home. They take on roles in their communities as doctors and police officers, engineers and entrepreneurs, mothers and fathers. As a grateful nation, it is our task to make that transition possible, to ensure our returning heroes can share the opportunities that have given so much to defend. The freedoms we cherish endure because of their service and sacrifice, and our country must strive to honor our veterans by fulfilling our responsibilities to them and upholding the sacred trust we share with all who have served. Whereas on days like this, we are all called to reflect on immeasurable burdens that have been borne by so few. We pay tribute to our wounded, our missing, our fallen, and our families, men and women who have known the true cost of conflict and deserve our deepest respect now and forever. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of City of Wenatchee, with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, 2025, as Veterans Day in the City of Wenatchee, and encourage all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public ceremonies and private prayers. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of City of Wenatchee to be affixed on the sixth day of November, 2025. Mike Poyer, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Yor. Dan and Mike, will you guys come up, please? There's, there's never any words for me. We appreciate you guys so much.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everything that the council has, has done for us, and we're looking forward to a Veterans Day parade that will be great for the Valley and all of our veterans, both who are, who are with us and who are, who are not. So, thank you very much.
And the other thing is, we'd like to thank the Wenatchee Valley, because they support the veterans like you would not believe. I mean, it's unbelievable. I mean, there's a lot of places in Wenatchee where people can get help if they need it, so, thank you Wenatchee for letting us host the parade every year, and thank you for everything.
And where's your offices are at?
Oh, we, we got the bunker, that's on Wenatchee Avenue, you can get help there, and then we got the Veterans Hall behind the Eagles, you can get help there. You can go to our place, so, American Legion Post 10, that's on the avenue, you can get help there. And then we got Tony Savarlas, you know, on Orondo Street, and you can get help there, too. I mean, we got a lot of places where veterans can get help.
I'll, I'll tell a story. A few years ago, my youngest daughter and I were going to Giza, Giza Credit Union, and there's a gentleman there, his law, he was looking for you guys. And he, I don't know if you remember this story, he was in his eighties, and he came up from, like, Tenasket. So, I called George Turner up, and I said, hey, I don't know what to do, bring him down here. By the time he, he was there all day, he didn't have enough gas to get home. He never took a social security check in his life, because he didn't think it was the right thing. You guys helped him, get him on programs, and it was an incredible experience to, to follow up, and know you guys have, you know, some attorneys, some people to assist to be able to get him a program. So, it's an incredible job you guys do for us. So, thank you, seriously, for what you guys do for our community, and thanks for always being there for us. So, thanks, thanks for letting us have a house. I always say that. Thanks for letting us have a home. Thank you.
Can you tell us what you're doing here?
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor, and everyone else that is here. Tonight, we are celebrating three employees that have met some significant milestones, and their dedication, integrity, and steadfast commitment to the City of Wenatchee exemplifies the very best of public service. Each of these team members has made a meaningful and lasting impact, not only within our city organization, but throughout the community they serve. We are truly grateful for their contributions and proud to have them as part of our team. So, please help me in congratulating them and thanking them for their service. First, we have Sergeant Eric Baki with ten years. Is Sergeant Baki here? He is not here, okay? Sergeant Mark Ward, I know he is not here, he is also at ten years. And then Parking Enforcement Officer Tito Mercado, he is here, five years.
I was just gonna say, oh, I was just gonna say, I know that Sergeant Eric's mom is here, because I hope she doesn't mind me calling her out. Do you, would you like to accept this award for your son? Sorry, because I know you, I'm like, Dee, come get it.
We've known each other for a little while. How are you? Do you want to get some coffee?
Eric's gonna be in trouble.
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Do we have a presentation?
Do I just click the slide? Good evening, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Ellen Gustafidi, I'm the Assistant Project Engineer for Washdott's State Route 28 East Wenatchee Corridor Improvements Project. With me today is Justin, Justin Handmond, our Project Engineer, and Ryan Wheeler, the Design Team Lead. We are here today to provide information about the project. While it is located in the city of East Wenatchee, and not here in Wenatchee, it is a project that will impact and benefit the full valley. This seventy-one and a half million dollar project aims to improve mobility and safety in the north-south corridor in East Wenatchee. It will widen Sunset Highway between Ninth Street and Hadley Street, and will include other improvements. We are currently in the design and right-of-way acquisition phases of this project, with construction start, planned to start in 2028. Before I get into the project specifics, I would like to give a little context and the background for the project. The need for additional north-south roadway capacity through the Wenatchee Valley was identified as early as the nineteen fifties. Various efforts were initiated in the subsequent decades. In 2006 and 2007, an environmental impact statement analyzed different alternatives for mobility through the corridor, and came up with the East Side Corridor Project, comprised of six stages. This current project will build stages three and four, Alternative 3B, of that larger project. Stage one, the East Side Extension, was completed in 2013, and the other stages have not yet been funded. So, back to the specific project, the East Wenatchee Corridor Improvements Project. This project will widen the highway for two miles between Ninth Street and Hadley Street. The new roadway will consist of four lanes with a non-mountable curb median to separate opposing lanes of traffic. It will construct sidewalk and shoulders that accommodate bikes, and it will also reduce the speed limit from forty miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour, to better reflect the context of the new roadway and the surrounding area. So, shown here is an existing image of the roadway, starting about five files and looking south. And now you can see this is a mock-up of what the new roadway will look like. We hold the pavement on the left edge of the screen, and this location widened to the west. So, you can see the sidewalk and median curb, you can also see retaining walls. These will be installed where needed and where possible to reduce right-of-way impacts. So, generally, on the north side of the project, we widen to the west, and on the east, on the south end of the project, we widen to the east. As part of the project, the four major intersections will be constructed to be multi-lane roundabouts. So, these are Valley Mall Parkway, Fifteenth Street, Nineteenth Street, and Twenty-third Street. All the other intersections will have the median curb, and be restricted to right-in, right-out turning movements. This median curb will improve mobility and reduce the potential for collisions, as vehicles will not form queues trying to make a left turn onto the side streets or into driveways. So, shown here is an aerial view of what Nineteenth Street Roundabout will look like, and the other roundabout designs are similar, with two through lanes on State Route 28, and one through lane on the side street. The central apron will be mounted by trucks, and trucks are designed to straddle the lanes in the roundabout. Early on in the project, we analyzed whether to install roundabouts or traffic signals at these major intersections, and ultimately, it was determined that roundabouts were selected. They're determined to be safer, and traffic modeling shows that they provide more reliable movement for the day throughout the day, as well as for projected future traffic volumes. So, several additional elements will be included in this project. We'll be constructing about twenty retaining walls to reduce the size of the project footprint. We'll be installing a new contained stormwater system that will convey water to a new facility down near the loop trail. At Sand Canyon Creek, just south of Nineteenth Street, we will be replacing a fish barrier with a fish passage structure. And then as part of the project, the, there'll be hundreds of utility relocations that will need to occur. Most of these will be completed ahead of Washdott's construction, and we are working with the various utility agencies for the relocations that will need to be done within our own construction, our own construction. And finally, as the picture shows here, we will be creating a new connection to the Apple Capital Loop Trail at Valley Mall Parkway. There is already a desire trail there, we will be paving, installing a paved connection. So, we cannot talk about this project without talking about right-of-way impacts. This project requires significant right-of-way acquisition to accommodate the new roadway footprint. We recognize that while the end project will have a great benefit to the community, it has a big impact on the adjacent properties. During design, we utilize various techniques to minimize the footprint. These included narrowing the roadway section, building retaining walls, offsetting the roundabouts, lowering the speed limit, and steepening side slopes. Even with those minimization efforts, we're impacting about a hundred and thirty parcels along the corridor in some way. And these impacts range from temporary easements to tie a driveway into the new roadway, to strip acquisitions where the project impacts, sorry, to strip acquisitions where we need to purchase a portion of the property, to full acquisitions where the project impacts the main structure, and we need to relocate the household. Washdott's Real Estate Services Group has been working with the property owners to purchase the necessary property at fair market value. The right-of-way phase began last summer in 2024. Since then, we have started to acquire property and have already relocated about eight households, and our first demolitions will start occurring this fall. We also cannot talk about this project without talking about our many community partners. We've coordinated with them on various design elements of the project. The two obvious partners are the city of East Wenatchee and Douglas County, as the project falls within both of these jurisdictions. However, the city of Wenatchee is also one of our partners. Our project funding is part of the matching funds the city identified to receive their So, in addition to coordinating with our local partners, partners, we have also hosted various public engagement events to, to create awareness of the project and provide space for public feedback. These have included both large open houses, as well as maintaining a booth at local events and going to local meetings. We plan to continue to engage the public and be present in the community to keep people informed and involved. So, what can people expect moving forward? As I said, we're in the design and right-of-way phases of the project. So, right-of-way acquisitions will continue through 2027. Utility relocations ahead of the main project will start as early as next, as 2026. To expect us to start seeing some traffic control on the road. For design, we're continuing to dial in on various elements, and if you're interested in learning more about the project or talking to members of our team, we encourage you to come to our next open house, which we'll host next year in 2026. All right, that's all I have for you this evening. Any questions?
Lot of information.
It is. I try to scale it down, if I try to get the main points across. But yeah, feel free to reach out if you have any, any further questions moving forward.
So, can you send this presentation to the city clerk, and we'll get it to all the city council and myself?
Yes. Yeah, send my contact info, too, I neglected to put it on this slide.
Okay, that'd be great. Any other questions, or? We're good? Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center. Hello, Mariah. I see you got a couple board members here, too, I think?
I do, yes. Thank you for having me here tonight, it's good to see you all. I have with me joining tonight two of our board members, Dennis Johnson and Paula Arno Martinez. And I want to start off the presentation just by first thanking you. I'm gonna talk about the, about the museum expansion project that we're doing earlier this summer. You have helped us with this by making an investment in the museum, and thank you very much for that. We couldn't be as far without that partnership, and we're really grateful for it. I've come to you a few times over the years to talk about the museum expansion, what it's gonna look like. I don't really think there's any way of really being able to describe it without seeing it for yourselves, and we're finally at the point where I can really show you what this project is gonna look like. So, most of my presentation today is to walk you through, or through a 3D fly-through of the video. I'll talk a little bit about the timing of the project, our funding, and then I'm happy to take any questions.
Hello, my name is Mariah Thornock, and I'm the Executive Director of the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center, right here in downtown Wenatchee. I am so excited to share our vision for the museum's upcoming transformation. Are you ready to join me on a 3D fly-through of our reimagined spaces? Great, let's go. The new museum entrance faces Centennial Park, integrating the museum with the surrounding public spaces and inviting the community in. Our first stop is the Lower Plaza, adjacent to our café. With outdoor seating, it's a welcoming space for people to gather, relax, and connect. Up a set of stairs, or a fully accessible ramp, is our Upper Plaza. This space will host community events, cultural celebrations, and kids' camps. It's where traditions like our native salmon bait will come to life right outside our door. Coming through the new main entrance, you'll step into the Welcome Gallery. Here, the original building's brick facade is visible behind the front desk, blending history with new possibilities. Right off the lobby is Coyote's Corner, our newly reimagined children's museum. It features a kid-sized version of the Wenatchee Valley, complete with a toddler zone for our littlest guests. Kids can climb up into an apple tree, cross into the mountains, and look down over our beloved model train. A secret loft inspired by historic fire lookout offers ever-changing exhibits curated by our team, so families will want to come back again and again. Next... Next, you'll arrive at Coming Down the River, an exhibit on hydro power in our region's dams. Off to the right is our salmon chute, where kids can slide down the chute and climb up the fish ladder, just like the salmon at Rocky Reach Dam. From there, step into the Ice Age Theater, a 4D experience in the round that tells the dramatic origin stories of our valley. You'll feel the lava flows, ice age floods, and geologic forces that shaped this place. Coming back into the Welcome Gallery, you'll take the elevator or the stairs to the second floor, where the Valley Gallery gives you a stunning view from the balcony. This is where our surrounding landscape connects with the stories of those who have lived here. In the North Gallery, we explore the deep history of North Central Washington. From the ancient megafauna and fauna to the indigenous peoples of the region, this gallery is being co-curated with the Colville Confederated Tribe and includes petroglyphs, Clovis points, and the story of our first people. As you move forward, you'll enter the era of fur trading and mining. Step into the Miller Fur Trading Post and try your hand at an interactive game that puts you in the role of a 19th-century trader. Then discover the arrival of the sternwhealers and railroad. See how irrigation transformed the valley, paving the way for Wenatchee to become the apple capital of the world. Next is the gallery dedicated to Clyde Pangborn, whose groundbreaking flight from Japan to East Wenatchee marked the first trans-Pacific flight. Here, you can sit down in the cockpit of Misfutal and get your chance to try and make that historic flight across the Pacific. Will you drop the landing gear in time like Pangborn did? Finally, we arrive at the modern era, celebrating the last 40 years of Wenatchee's growth, cultural development, and community spirit. Learn how places like Pibus Market and Numerica Park came to be, and how they're shaping the region. So there you have it, a glimpse into the new future of the museum. A welcome hall and revitalized exhibits are just the start. Our transformed museum will also have an enhanced education center, an upgraded makerspace, a workforce training café, an art gallery, spaces for local artists to showcase their work, and of course, our new grand entrance facing Centennial Park. This new museum will be interactive and immersive. Visitors won't just read about history, they'll step into it. They'll engage, connect, and experience our region's stories in a whole new way. This project is more than just bricks and mortar. It is about building a stronger, more connected community. Together, we can create a museum that reflects who we are and who we want to be. I can't wait to share it with you. So, there you have it. But I am thrilled that we are able to showcase a video with you with that detail, because we have come that far with our designs. The exhibits that you're seeing there have been fully designed out. We have floor plans. There is a community advisory group that's helping us research and gather that local history. So while we have a professional exhibits team that's helping us develop this, it's informed by local historians, local groups, and local people. We also are in the construction document phase of the museum floor plan itself, so we know what that plaza is going to look like, and what it's going to take to connect to Centennial Park. We've started to dive in and really, and, and design out every piece and part that comes along with construction documents. So we are, we're quite close. We're close enough that I can tell you tonight, we will be closing the museum down and having a groundbreaking ceremony on May 16th, 2026. So I'd love to see as many of you there who is possible. I hope that this is really a community event. We're planning it on a Saturday, because we don't want it to be the typical event where, you know, a handful of very important people come together and cut a ribbon. We want the community to come out and celebrate. It is a place for us to have performances, have interactive games, have bouncy houses for kids, but they come and get to celebrate the museum closing down, but then the museum reopening and becoming something more for the community. I expect that we'll be closed for two years, reopening again in 2028. Museum is not going to go, even though the buildings will go dark, we will not go dark. We are, as we speak, currently moving all of our collections off-site. We'll have a lot of collections work that will be taking place. We're in the middle of identifying a headquarters for the museum, where people will be able to come and find us downtown Wenatchee, maybe over in East Wenatchee. But there will be a spot where people can come to the museum. We'll have a gallery space. Exhibits like our regional high school art show will continue. And then all of our programming will be throughout, will be a museum in the community. Our summer camps will be at schools. Multicultural Fest will, will be out in the community. Our environmental film series, you'll find that likely up at the college. But we'll be working with our community partners to make sure that all these things continue to happen. And while, all while that, we'll also continue our fundraising efforts. So thanks to not only the investment you made, but a really large investment that this community has made, we've already raised $20 million for the project, about two-thirds the way there. Far enough that we have, we're getting, closing in on that, on our, what we need for construction and starting to fundraise for our exhibits. So you guys have been along this journey with me for a number of years as I come and talk about it, and it's very exciting to say we get to start to talk about this project in a matter of months and not years anymore. Thank you, guys, for your support, and I would be happy to take any questions you might have about it.
I will mention, I appreciate Councilmember Atkinson's been on, on the board, and you have created excitement, and I had no idea you were that close on the amount of money you guys have raised so far. I guess I'm six months behind. And so that's, congratulations to you guy, you guys, and also Councilmember Quevus was, has excitement to be on that board. So we want to still participate, even after tonight, we want to continue to participate if that's to be on your board.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to be an exciting time to be a part of the museum. You know, this is going to be the, the museum of tomorrow. We have a wonderful museum right now, but the museum tomorrow is certainly going to be that, that community hub. It's going, we're going to be able to engage the community in a way that we never have. And so to be able to be a part of those decision-making about how we launch that, I think it's going to be pretty fun. So welcome. You've got a lot of work ahead of you.
Yes.
I put him on the spot, but he was all excited. We were talking about it a month ago. He goes, hey, I think I would like to do that. I said, perfect. So, yeah, that's, that's wonderful news. So, and I know programming, I know we're trying to collaborate with some of the organizations for programming for the future, to see if we can go to the state and go as a community with other organizations to, you know, we think that's highly important.
Yeah, you know, I don't know that a lot of people know of the extent of programming that the museum does, especially when it comes to our education program. We have right now a after-school robotics program. We're the only competitive elementary robotics team in the valley. The school districts are starting to lose their competitive robotics team, and so we're glad to be able to fill that gap, but there's more that we can do. And there's more after-school program we can do, and once we have more classrooms with this new building, we'll be able to fill the place up after school.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mariah?
I just want to say it's beautiful.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Well, you guys know how to get ahold of me. Feel free to come by. Questions come up in the middle of the night. I love talking about this project, so thank you.
Thanks, Mariah. All right, we'll go to our action items.
Your Honor, we have a point of clarification we need to look at. Daniel, we kind of made a mistake here. If you look at consent items in the action request we read into motion 2025-39, if you look at action item, it is the same action item number, 2039A. I don't know what we need to do here, Daniel. If you look at consent items, resolution 2025-39 should have been read into the record. We read in 2025-39, which is the same as action item A, 2025-39.
Was it supposed to be 38?
It was supposed to be 38. We read 39 into the, into the record.
So somebody can make a motion to amend the item that was passed and to adopt resolution number 2025-38.
Your Honor, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
All right, Your Honor, I'll make a, excuse me, a motion to amend the previously passed resolution 2025-39 to read as resolution number 2025-38.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Rodenstein and a second by Councilmember Atkinson to amend our agenda item to approve resolution from 2025-39 to 2025-38. Any discussion or comments?
Sorry.
I, no, this is great, because it's funny. That was perfect. I'm glad you got that. Saves us time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Hello, David?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director. And this evening, I'm here requesting approval of resolution 2025-39 to accept the donation of about 1.3 acres of property from Bill and Kate Larson, and to authorize the mayor to sign the related documents. So earlier this year, the Larsons approached the city about donating a portion of their property to the city. It's adjacent to the Balsam route trail or Foothills North Natural Area, so if you don't know where that is, it's kind of behind Broadview, to give you a general idea. Went out, we looked at the property, and then we met with the Larsons. After that, we reviewed our city comprehensive plan and also took a look at our level of service standards. And after that review, we found that it was consistent with the goals and objectives in the plan, and also will help address the level of service deficiencies for natural areas. In May, we brought this to city council, and you guys authorized us to move ahead with the potential acquisition. Then over the summer, we completed a survey to create new legal descriptions, so we could do a boundary line adjustment to adjust the property lines. This October, we submitted the boundary line adjustment application, and that process is currently underway. It should be finished pretty soon. And so to finalize the acquisition, staffers is requesting the approval of that resolution, which will then allow the mayor to sign all the various related documents that we have to do to finalize it. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
This is also brought to Public Services Committee a couple of times. No questions? With that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve resolution number 2025-39, accepting the donation of real property from William and Mary K. Larson, and authorizing the mayor to sign documents to transfer the donated real property to the city of Wenatchee.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and a second by Councilmember Rodenstein for City Council approved resolution number 2025-39, accepting the donation of real property from William and Mary K. Larson, and authorizing the mayor to sign documents, transfer the donated real property to the city of Wenatchee. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Posenjack?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. I think you probably are going to be hearing from me for the next little while, so I apologize for that. And if you need to take a break from my voice, I will completely understand that and not be offended. So the first item I have tonight is four agreements that were largely created by the city attorney and the museum and others besides myself. But as you just heard from Mariah, the Wenatchee Valley Museum is beginning a major capital project, and to do so, first, we need to be able to transfer the building ownership from the city to the Wenatchee Valley Museum. So the first agreement on here is a purchase and sale agreement, and due to all the required deferred maintenance on that facility, the city is offering that building for a dollar. The second agreement is an assignment of an occupancy agreement with the Wenatchee Area Genealogical Society. They've had sort of a sublease there at the museum, and that needs to be transferred from the city to the museum, so that they would now be the lessor. The third is a lease termination agreement. Because the museum currently has a lease with the city for those facilities, we need to terminate that, and the city was providing a level of service for that lease, and so there is consideration also being paid from the city for being able to terminate that lease moving forward. And then we are also, the fourth agreement is a service agreement, which is a five-year financial commitment, similar to, it's a per capita, dollar-per-capita agreement, similar to what East Wenatchee has with the museum currently. So then we'll kind of be on the same basis as East Wenatchee. Together, those last two agreements will be roughly $600,000 that the city will be contributing to the museum per year, and that number is already included in the preliminary budget that you have. So unless you have any questions for me or the city attorney or the museum, I would entertain, or I'm going to entertain them. You can entertain them.
You'll entertain us?
I'll entertain you. What do you, what do you want to hear?
Just, and maybe I just missed it, but the $220,000 is for 10 years.
Yes, the $220,000 for the lease termination agreement, that is for 10 years. And then there's, the other piece is for next year is roughly $380,000, and that is for five years. And then I believe after the five years, then there's a CPI calculation or something after that to extend it.
There are no questions. I would make a motion for the City Council to approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement, assignment of occupancy agreement, lease termination agreement, and service agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson and a second by Councilmember Harold for City Council approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement, assignment of occupancy agreement, lease termination agreement, and service agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion or comments? I will say thank you. It's been like nine months or a year or longer than that working on it, so I appreciate you coming in and helping us out, Councilmember Atkinson, and, and our city attorney, and our city administrator Laura that worked through this, and Mariah, and you and your group to get this to the finish line. So I will, I didn't, I didn't know how it was going to play out the first time we met, but it, it's going to turn out the way it's supposed to be. So thank you for everybody for all their work. Yeah, I would just add that the museum was good to work with in terms of negotiating through, not everybody getting exactly what they wanted, but there was good conversation, and I think we ended up with something that worked, so, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
So the next item I have is a presentation for the 2026 budget. What, at, at the next council meeting, you'll be asked to adopt the 2026 budget. And so what I've liked to do the last few years is go through that budget document a couple of weeks ahead of when you're asked to adopt it, and give an opportunity to walk through the different features that are in the budget document. But first, I should, I want to do a little reconciliation between what I presented a month ago in, within the proposed preliminary budget and what we're presenting tonight and in two weeks from now. So on the, on October 9th, we showed a, that net recurring of a negative $2 million. We focused on that, and, and that's when we brought up the topic of the public safety sales tax, which we're now calling the criminal justice sales tax. And since then, you can see the change over 2026 proposed, those different dollar amounts. The, there were five changes that we did to the general fund since a month ago. The first one is we did build in an increase in anticipation of the public safety sales tax, which we'll be discussing after this presentation. And then there was a slight decrease in the property ta, estimated property tax revenue after we received our numbers from the assessor, which we'll also be discussing after, after that presentation. And then there was a small increase for junior city council, and there was an increase to the city attorney contract. And then we added an expense in offsetting revenue for a community development grant that is just being carried forward from this year into next year. Outside of the general fund, we have a few other changes. We did add some budget to the Public Arts Fund and the Parks Capital Projects Fund. There were a couple of other projects that were identified that may roll into 2026, so we needed to build, just kind of, we're moving the budget from 2025 to 2026 for those. And then we also met at the TPA and LTAC committee meetings to discuss the Chamber Commerce Contract, and so there will probably be some adjustments to that, and so those are also included in the other funds. But I think you've all, you all But I think you've all, you all should have received that preliminary breakdown that had all of this detail. So as you go through this, if you've got any questions, because we'll be looking at some of this here in a minute, feel free to interrupt me and ask away. So all of those changes have been incorporated into our draft budget that we have online right now. So if, if anybody wants to follow along, or if you want to follow along, you can go to wenatchiewa.gov, and with one hover and two clicks, you can pull up our PDF. If you hover over the Government tab and then you click on Budget and Finance and then the 2026 Draft Budget, you can pull up the document that we'll be going over here. In the first part of, the first few pages of this budget document is a table of contents and an introduction that talks about our budgeting process, our financial policies. We've got a city org chart, and we've got charts that show the number of budgeted city employees that we have. The last chart in the introduction section is what we title Exhibit A. With the budget, with the budget ordinance that you'll be presented at the next council meeting, this is sort of the meat of what you'll be asked to adopt. By state law, we have to adopt a budget at the fund level. We have 35 funds, that, the general fund being the main one that we often focus on as our main operating fund. So this will be attached to the ordinance in a couple of weeks, and this is what you will be officially adopting. This is also, this is in the, the budget book that we have online. And then the next section of this budget document focuses on the general fund. It's got a long-term projection here that I think you've seen at a previous council meeting. It details a few of the assumptions that go into that long-term projection, if you're interested in that kind of thing. And then we've got a summary of our revenues and expenses in the general fund, which we'll jump into in slight detail. So this is, these are the revenues of the general fund with the, showing the change over 2025 to 2026. Some of the things you'll notice, sales tax is, we've projected that to be pretty steady. As you'll see, in 2024, last year, our sales tax collections actually decre, declined, which was a little surprising because that's very rare that year-over-year our sales tax goes down. But it has come back in 2025, and we expect it to continue the steady growth patterns that we have seen for the last couple of decades. So we expect that to be, to be steady. I wouldn't say it's going to be extremely strong, but I think steady is a good, a good term for that. Then below that, you'll see two lines for criminal justice sales tax. The first criminal, just for clarification, the first criminal justice sales tax is one that we've had for a while. It is one that the county adopted, and it is, it's implemented countywide. And the way that works is countywide, that one-tenth goes to the state, and then the state swirls it around and gives it back to the cities and the counties within Schland County in a per capita basis. And so then the second line is the one that I'll be asking City Council to adopt here in just a few minutes. So this, this one is specific to the city limits of Wenatchee. And in a full year, we expect it to bring in 1.6 million. But because if this is adopted tonight, it wouldn't go into effect until April 1st. And so it will be roughly three-quarters of that. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit more than the 1.2 for the last nine months of the year. But we're going to be a little conservative on that. Some of the other numbers, you'll see a big number, a big negative by intergovernmental. That reflects the expiration of our traffic safety grant that we'll talk about in just a minute. I think you've heard me talk about it already, that we expected to happen. And with that, we've got, on the other, on the other hand, we've got the, our expenses in the general fund, all the different departments within the general fund. We did talk about this in detail a month ago when we met, and this really hasn't changed a whole lot since then. So there are some percentage increases that look higher than what you would expect. But if you remember, we talked about interfund allocations at the last, at the last council meeting, and I won't, and I will spare you the, the explanation once again. So unless you have any questions on these, I will keep going. This also details what we have continued to talk about with the recurring budget in the general fund and how, again, a month ago, we were showing a negative 1.9 million. Now we're showing a negative 800, almost 900,000, which looks scary, but shouldn't be that scary. Because what actually ends up happening, and you'll see, I've got the 2022, 23, and 24 budgets that were adopted, and they were budgeted to break even in each one of those years, relatively break even. And when they actually played out, which you see above, they ended up, they ended up netting 2 million more than what the budget, how the budget was adopted. And again, I've, how I've explained this before is when you budget, we usually budget our revenues a tiny bit conservative. And so we will probably, we typically exceed those revenues by about a million. And on the expenses, we also can't exceed our legally adopted expense budget. So we typically come in 98%, 97, 98% around there. So we end up getting a million that way as well. In our 2025 budget, I actually don't anticipate, I think it's going to be a little bit tighter than it has been the last couple of years. So I think we'll still end up with a positive number, but I will be surprised if it swings by 2 million like the, like the previous years did. And similar with the 2026 budget. Again, I'm not anticipating a 2 million swing unless our revenues really perform well next year. But at least, at least we'll, we're set, we're set for a good, good future years. After that general fund summary, you can go through and read about each one of the general departments in the general fund. Here you'll get a little bit of a history of the actual and just the 2025 budget, because we don't know what the actuals are yet for '25. And then the 2026 budget, we also have budget notes for some of the significant increases. Again, you'll see a reference to interfund allocations in here, and I'm not going to, that's what I'm going to say. At the end of the general fund, we talk about our, we've got our, what we call Department 23, which is our one-time request, our non-recurring requests that departments will bring. These requests for projects or for purchases, and Finance Committee reviews them and recommends which ones we should build into the budget. Because we are in a season of needing to tighten our budget, you will notice that in 2024 and '25, they were much less than the previous couple of years when we had lots of COVID funds and a couple surprising revenue years, so we had reserves to spend. We slowed that down in 2024 and '25, and we really slowed that down for the 2026 budget. And, yeah, and I think in my eight years here, we've never had a year where we had less than, than that million four in one-time requests on the general fund. And so this was, this was very, I think, eye-opening for all the departments to, to see that we had to leave it, we had to keep it this tight this year. But again, we were trying to, our mantra's been to maintain our level of service. After the general fund, we detail all other 34 funds that we have. So this, the budget document is a great place to go. And if you want to find out what all those different funds are, we've got the utility funds, we've got street funds, our homeless services fund, you can go through there and get descriptions of each one of those. Again, kind of similar historic information that you see for the general fund departments. And after, after all of the fund budgets, then we also have a kind of a summary listing of all of our capital projects that, that the city expects to work on in 2026. Maybe not complete, but they will at least be working on them. And so there's a list of, I probably should have had that number off the top of my head, but there's quite a few capital projects, and you can, you can get, get familiar with what, with some of the big, the big items the city's going to be doing next year. And obviously, the largest one is, are the Apple Capital Loop projects. I think, I think we've got 81 million of Apple Capital Loop project, capital projects in the budget, which is, like, it makes, yeah, makes up a significant portion of our total budget. So the next steps in our budget process, we're going to talk about the criminal justice sales tax ordinance in just a minute. And then we'll also talk about the property tax ordinance that hopefully go into our, the budget that has been presented and will be adopted next week or next council meeting. So then I've got just kind of these little ifs. If the criminal justice sales tax is approved tonight, it's really easy. We'll just bring the same budget that you saw tonight to the November 20th council meeting and ask you to adopt that. If it's not approved, then the mayor and I are going to have some scrambling, last-minute budget edits to, to make. That will most likely be a bunch of Band-Aid fixes and kick the can down the road one more year. And then we would do the final budget adoption on November 20th. Any questions?
I just want to put a word in for that booklet that you put together. It is really helpful and just a great thing to, if you get questions from constituents, that it's a great place to point people, so, thanks.
Yeah, that's, that's good. So for the next item, I think our IT director wanted to present this one. No? No? Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll take this one, too. So the next one is a criminal justice sales tax ordinance. You've heard me refer to this as the public safety sales.
I think, I apologize to interrupt. I think I need to call a public hearing at this time.
That's right.
So you guys want a break? Okay, let's do a five, five-minute break, and then we'll do the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are we good? Got everybody? Okay, now we'll have a public hearing, so we'll call it to order for consideration of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash twelve for a criminal justice sales tax. Staff will first give a report, followed by public testimony, and then we'll just ask you to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and the comments should be addressed to the hearing body and should not be of personal nature. The public will be limited to three minutes. Okay, Brad?
All right, well, thank you. Now, sorry, sorry for jumping the gun on that one. Um, so yes, we've got the criminal justice sales tax ordinance tonight, and, um, you've heard me refer to it as the public safety sales tax, um, but as, uh, the city attorney was helping to put the ordinance together, um, it, looking at the law, it made more sense to call this the criminal justice sales tax, um, and use the terminology that was in the, that was in, um, House Bill twenty fifteen, that was approved early this year by the Washington State Legislature, and it gave city councils the authority to adopt a one-tenth sales tax to be used for criminal justice purposes. Um, there are criminal justice training commission requirements that, um, that our police chief has, uh, verified that, uh, we, we comply with. Um, so there is an application process that, um, that we will, will be submitting in, I think, the next couple of months, um, if council chooses to, uh, pass this ordinance. Uh, so, why would we implement this? Um, as we've touched on over the last, um, month with, um, with our budget challenges that we have, uh, our, the main issue is that our regular revenues just can't keep up, um, with our increase in a couple of large contracts, large service contracts. One of those contracts is the jail contract. Um, the Shal- Shalane County is, uh, would like the city to increase our jail contract from one-point-six million to two-point-seven million, um, almost a seventy percent increase. Um, our regular, uh, revenue increases that are around five percent, uh, four, five percent, just can't handle those. Um, also, our public defender contract, um, you've all heard, uh, you have the right to an attorney. If you cannot afford an attorney, one will be provided for you, hopefully not directly, hopefully on movies or something. Um, but, uh, that means that the city is required to pay, uh, for these public defender attorneys. Uh, the state has recently put caseload limits on, um, on public defenders, and so, uh, that, the cost of that is also going up significantly. Um, so that's going up about sixty percent from, uh, six-hundred thousand a year to a million a year. Um, we have, we also have the expiration of a traffic safety grant. Um, the police department was awarded a grant a few years ago for, um, four-hundred-and-thirty-some thousand dollars a year to fund, uh, two-and-a-half, uh, FTE, to do traffic enforcement. Um, and we knew that that was gonna expire, and we had planned that we'd be able to absorb those, those positions once that grant expired, um, which we would be able to do, uh, if we didn't also have these other major contracts. Um, so this just, uh, it just adds insult to injury. Uh, so with all of these things, um, we do need to come up with a long-term solution, um, which is where the criminal justice sales tax, um, comes in, so that we can maintain our current level of service. Uh, so, the question of the day is, what is the impact of this sales tax to our residents? Um, with, with the sales ta- the one-tenth of a percent increase would take our sales tax rate from eight-point-eight to eight-point-nine. Um, what that does is, it adds ten cents on every hundred dollars of taxable sales. Uh, uh, we, based on some rough estimates, um, we'd think that that costs the median household, uh, twenty dollars a year, and the way we come up with that is, is a, a rough, a rough idea when, when we look up the median household income of Wenatchee is just shy of eighty thousand dollars a year. Um, so, once you start thinking of, um, uh, housing costs, your rent or your mortgage, um, which is not, not subject to sales tax, your utilities, um, your food, and your medical expenses, um, when you start taking all of those non-taxable items, um, the median household would probably have around twenty thousand that they would end up spending on, on, on goods that are subject to resale, retail sales tax, um, and one-tenth of a percent on twenty thousand is gonna be twenty dollars a year. Uh, the other, uh, uh, I guess the, for our residents, the nice thing about this tax is that it, it doesn't just make our own residents on the hook for this. It puts this tax burden on anybody who does business within the city limits of Wenatchee, um, because everybody who does business within the city limits of Wenatchee, um, benefit from our, our public safety. Uh, so, uh, contrasting that, contrasting this, uh, this one-tenth of a percent sales tax, we contrast that with property tax to get the same amount of revenue from property tax, which we do have, the council has the councilmatic authority because of banked capacity that we can get into when we talk about property tax if we want. Um, but that would cost a homeowner who owns a five-hundred thousand, a house that is assessed at five-hundred thousand dollars, it would end up costing them one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars per year, um, for the city to generate the same amount of revenue. Um, and that, yeah, the main thing is that that is only our residents and, and the property owners within the city limits that would be paying that, rather than everybody who comes and visits and works and plays in Wenatchee. So, our recommendation is that city council would adopt, uh, the new one-tenth criminal justice sales tax. Um, this will address the criminal justice increases that are outside of the city's control, and, um, if the council adopts it tonight, uh, we end up sending that ordinance to the Department of Revenue, and it would end up going into effect April first of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and we estimate that it'll bring in probably a little over one-point-two million in twenty-twenty-six, and then, um, hopefully a little over one-point-six million in twenty-twenty-seven and, um, future years going forward. So, does anybody have questions for me before we turn it over to public comment, or I can come back after that?
Brad noted the, uh, the requirements. They are numerous. The list is about eighty-five items we need to certify. Spent two days this week going through, uh, we have areas where we need to make slight adjustments, but we can easily be in compliance by April first. The process goes, we apply to the state, to Criminal Justice Training Commission. They have forty-five days to review our application. They ship it back with any areas they're not satisfied with. We make adjustments. We have a hundred-and-eighty days to make those changes before the state would say, "Hey, you can't have your tax dollars." Uh, again, gone through the whole mess. There's some minor policy changes that need to be made that can be made easily, and some minor training issues that need to be addressed. Confident that we are in full compliance. It's a good thing about being an accredited agency. It's one of the thousand reasons it's good to be accredited, 'cause as I went through, it's like, this is a piece of cake. We've done this before. We just have to proof it a different way now. We need to report it to a different entity in a different manner and split up the reporting. So, we'll be prepared to engage that process if this is adopted.
Chief, is there any additional requirements, uh, like annual reports, any, like, once we're, we're done with your initial work, good?
Strangely, no. In the, in the requirements that we see here, this is a one-time hurdle to cross. Uh, I would assume that at some point, we could see a change in that. Uh, the legislature does what the legislature does, but at this point, it is a, it is a one-time. There's one area in there that is impossible for every applicant to comply with, because the required training does not exist that's provided by CJTC. So, everybody just has to commit, we will do the training when it becomes available, no later than July of two thousand twenty-seven. It's a, it's very strange. Um, the certification panel that wrote the application part that needs to be satisfied wrote something that doesn't exist, but acknowledged it doesn't exist, so we need to comply with it when it exists, and it's a common sense training thing, we'll gladly complete as appropriate.
Thank you.
I just wanna add, um, if you're talking about reporting requirements, the ordinance does create a new, um, chapter in the city code, chapter five-point-one-one-five, and it does require, under the House bill, requires certain reporting requirements, and those reports on how the money is spent will be placed on the city's website.
Sure.
And then the findings in the ordinance under section one, uh, uh, the police department, uh, through, uh, Chief Brinefeld can confirm that those findings are valid and accurate.
Thank you.
Any other staff right now? Hearing none, and we'll get a chance to ask some more questions soon in a minute. I'll turn it over to the public for a three-minute comment. Who would like to come up first? Or come up last?
My name is Tara Shuttleworth. Uh, I guess my very first question would be, is anyone from the Wenatchee world documenting this right now? Is anyone here from the Wenatchee world? Okay, uh, that's the first question. Um, second question is, or second statement is, I mean, I'm just your average Joe, and so I'm trying to wrap my head around this, and it's very important to me, because as a community activist, I'm always looking for funding, and right now, after speaking with our mayor and other council members, I know that we don't have any funding, which is huge to me. So, as just your average Joe, when I'm looking at the budget and I see thirteen million, the first thing I'm gonna think is, thirteen million? That goes to our deplea- police department, but I've spoken with our chief, and after speaking with him, I understood why thirteen million is going to our police department. And so, what I am understanding is that from this tax, the criminal justice tax, we go from a two-million-dollar debt to a little under a million. Is that what you're, is that what we're saying here? I'm, I'm saying I'm, that's what I'm understanding, as just a normal citizen, right? And that, within a year, we will raise twelve-hundred, twelve million dollars, and that, so that means within one year, we'll be out of debt, is what I'm understanding. Um, and so if I'm wrong here, I, I need to know. And so, it's only twenty dollars per, per citizen to make this happen, and if you own property, it's a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So if I understood this correctly, as a citizen, I don't have an issue with this. But since we don't have anyone from the Wenatchee world documenting it, it's very, very important that this is said to our public in a very basic, easy way for us to understand. And I think that sometimes things like this slip through the cracks, because it gets too, i- i- there's too much being stated to a public that just wants to wrap their head around a really big issue. So I think there are gonna be issues with the thirteen-million-dollar debt, and people not quite understanding that the sales tax is not that much, and that i- it's just needed, and that it's going to get us out of debt. So, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Anybody? All right.
Hi again, uh, Josh Tarr, nine forty-six Highland Drive. Uh, good evening again. Uh, thank you all, uh, for giving us this opportunity to speak. Uh, obviously, a citizen of Wenatchee and a business owner, uh, and I'm, uh, also the current board chair of the Wenatchee Downtown Association, and, uh, kinda wearing my business owner hat. I am sick and tired of being taxed to death. Sales tax, income tax, tariffs, fees, price increases, surcharges, et cetera, and as an unpaid tax collector for the city, state, and federal government, I well, I know well how much our hard-earned money goes elsewhere with little or no say. And in a climate where basic governmental and civic competency is at an all-time low, compounded by the inflated confidence in one's opinion, this is of that very occasion in when, in which you and I do have a say and can make a difference. Uh, and I don't mean to disparage any of my friends and neighbors, but when you somehow connect a sales tax initiative to the closing of a well-known burger joint, this is simply just being misinformed, and maybe that's on purpose, as that seems to be kind of the trend nationally right now, but I digress. Um, this is my chance to say that the proposed one-tenth, one percent sales tax increase for public safety is a good idea, and one I fully support as a citizen and busy, business owner in the city of Wenatchee. We, and I do consider myself we, as a voter and an informed citizen, we've made leaps and bounds in the realm of public safety, and I don't want to lose that momentum. We currently have a homelessness, homelessness response coordinator, a full police staff for the first time in years, and most feel safe in their own neighborhoods, with maybe the exception of Highline Drive, or, uh, of, uh, Skyline Drive, so, um, this isn't any time, this is no time to neglect public safety, the way the voters recently chose to neglect our roads here in Wenatchee. If both this and the previous voter rejected sales tax were enacted, Wenatchee would still be at an average state rate, and currently, we're below. So I urge you, approve this tax, as much as it pains me to say that. Let's move forward, not back. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll turn it back over to the staff and council for any additional comments. Time for us to have questions, I guess?
Yeah, and I can, and I can speak, and there was a comment about, um, uh, filling a, filling our debt, um, which is slightly different than, uh, our budget deficit. So the two million, our two-million deficit that I had presented, um, contrasted with our eight-hundred thousand, uh, deficit in our budget. Um, maybe I can, if I don't make everybody sick by, if you're going through here. Um, so our, maybe we'll go back to, uh, so, yeah, so, that, uh, the one-point-nine million, uh, the net recurring deficit, um, that is really just the deficit in our revenues we bring in on an annual basis and our expenses. Um, if we go year after year with a budget shortfall of two million, or maybe that only ends up being five-hundred thousand a year after our, after what happens with our bu- budgeting, uh, pro, and actual process, um, having a deficit in your budget that large will just keep spending down the reserves and growing and growing year after year. Um, so what this does, um, it basically plugs that hole of the deficit, so that, um, we can sustain and maintain the, um, expected level of service that we have as a growing city.
Have questions for staff?
Your honor, I will just make a brief comment. I'm, I have to agree with Mr. Tarr. I hate taxes. I don't like increasing them, but in this instance, I would vote yes on this, simply because we can't afford to take a step backwards in our public safety, and these costs are not gonna go away. It's only probably going to continue to grow. It's very important that we pass this ordinance. It's, we need it, otherwise, we're going to have to not only lose police officers, but I see as cutting other services. And I'm sorry, but there is a cost for government services, so we need to pass this budget, and especially for public safety. And I'm gonna say something about what I do. I'm, I'm in tourism, and I sell conventions, and I have two top competitors, well, three, Spokane, Tri-Cities, and Yakima, and Yakima is my top. All things being equal, equal service, equal facilities, equal eras- cities, everything being equal, they will choose Wenatchee every time because of the safety we experience in this community, and that is because of our police department, and I don't know what I would do without them. We are doing very well in the convention business, and safety is a huge part of that. So I want everyone to understand that. So voting this down is going to cause us to lose three officers, and maybe jeopardize safety and other services as well. So I encourage you to vote yes.
I second that.
Just wanna, yeah, thank Linda for what she said. Also, um, not an easy decision to make, but when, I wanna thank staff for coming up with the solution also, because the way I see it, it's kind of the fairest way to, to, to tax and solve this problem, where it's everyone, you're talking about tourism, so everyone will be investing in our, our town through this measure, so that's kind of how I see it.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna thank Tara for her comment. I think the last thing we want to do as a city is not communicate in a way that is clear and understandable for everyone, so I appreciate, um, Brad, our finance committee. I know we've been talking about this for months. I know, Mayor, you guys have been working on this for a long time, but I appreciate how we're making it very easy to understand for the community. I know you made a flyer, and we put that out, so there's just a lot of resources, and I would just recommend that we share those with the people that, um, are making those comments or have misunderstandings about the reality of this tax. So thank you to everyone for all their work on this, and I, too, agree that this is the best, um, solution for our issue at hand, and I recognize that with time, we'll continue finding other creative ways. I know we said we're not hiring any more people, and, and I don't think we talked about that today, but that's also important to hear. We talked about it at finance all throughout. We are, essentially have a hiring freeze at the city, and there's positions and vacancies that we decided not to fill. Correct, Brad?
I, I think we still have, I, I don't believe that we have a hiring freeze at the moment. Um, we still have positions advertised to fill. Um, uh, so, yeah, we are still working on, on hiring and filling positions.
So we're healthy enough where we can do that?
Yeah, and so I guess some of the, some of the ex, some of the rationale for that is just that having these positions unfilled are just stretching, um, other, other positions and other employees to have to take on a lot more, and so, um, that is where if we left them unfilled, our service level is gonna decline, rather than be able to maintain that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'm going to have the public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-five-dash-twelve is now closed, and I turn it over to the city council for any action.
Your honor, I will move for city council to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five-dash-twelve enacting an additional sales and use tax of one-tenth of one percent as authorized in section two oh one, chapter three fifty. 350, Laws of Washington 2025, for criminal justice purposes, adding chapter 5.115 to the Wenatchee City Code and providing for servability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
We have the motion by council member Harold and second by council member Cuevas for city council adopt ordinance number 2025-12 enacting an additional sales and use tax on one-tenth of 1% as authorized in section 201, chapter 350, Laws of Washington 2025, for criminal justice purposes, adding chapter 5.115 to the Wenatchee City Code and providing for servability and establishing an effective date. Any other comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now, another public hearing. I think I got...
Do you have to read that again?
Public hearing to order regarding number 2025-13 authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in 2026 tax year. Staff will give report followed by pu, public testimony. And again, we just ask you to state your name and address and public will be limited to three minutes. Okay, you're up.
All right, the last one. Every year, I bring you the property tax ordinance. By law, we have to, city council has to adopt this and we have to get it back to the county assessor, I believe by the end of the month. And so, what, all, it's basically the same, the same increase that we've been asking for the last several years, just a 1% increase to the property tax. State legislature has limited cities to be able to increase their property tax by 1%. Technically, the city of Wenatchee has some banked capacity that could go above that 1%, but because we don't want to have that larger tax burden, we just do the, that minimum that the state allows, or the maximum the state typically allows is the 1%. So, the, I've got like a few numbers on the agenda report showing what we end up using our property tax for. The majority of our property tax we collect actually has of going to our street maintenance fund, so 3.9 million of this, 5.2 million goes to our street maintenance fund. We also had dedicated, when we issued the city hall bonds for remodel here, we dedicated a portion of our property tax for that, not le, not, not legally, but just sort of in, in name, that's what we said we're going to be using it for. So, about 800,000 of the property tax will go to pay off the city hall bonds. And then the rest of it goes to support our general services and general fund, whether that's parks or police or administration or community development. And also show, when you, when, when people think of their property tax, and we talk about property tax here at a city council meeting, people will think of, on, if they have a home that's assessed at 500,000, their property tax bill here in Wenatchee will be around 4,000 per year. And most of that doesn't have anything to do with the city of Wenatchee. Out of that, there's a chart in the agenda packet that you can see that if you own a 500,000 dollar home, your tax bill will be approximately 400, or 4,191. And only about 11% of that total bill actually comes to the city of Wenatchee. So, and about 467 dollars of that 4,000 would come to the city of Wenatchee. So, when we talk about a 1% increase on the property tax, it's 1% on that 467 dollars. So, if your property value changed at the same rate as everybody else's property value in the city of Wenatchee, then your city Wenatchee slice of the property tax would only go up by 1%, which on, again, using those same numbers would be about four and a half dollars per year. However, if your home value goes up faster than all of your neighbors, then you're going to get a higher percentage of that, of the, of the property tax bill. If your home value is assessed lower, then your property tax bill might actually drop. So, the county assessor does all of the assessing of properties around the city and sometimes certain areas will increase faster than others. But, but overall, in general, the average would be 1% on the city portion of property tax.
So, in your scenario, it's $4, you're asking for $4 in your scenario, everybody's going to be different, $4.50 per year?
For 2026.
For 2026.
An increase of, yeah.
Got it. What, when you mentioned bank capacity, what, do you know what we have?
About 1.8 million.
1.8, okay, I was just kidding. And how does that work, actually, I mean, how does that?
We, in the ordinance, I, I think city council, we just put another line in there saying that city council was electing to take bank capacity. Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look on, in on the exact language, but I...
You explained it to me once, I know, but I still, yeah, we'll catch up on it.
Yeah.
We're not doing it, so. Any other questions for Brad right now? If not, I'll turn it over to the public for a three-minute comment. Who would like to come up first? Anybody online? Okay, hearing no comment. Any other staff have anything else?
IT director?
IT department. Okay, now, the public hearing ordinance 2025-13 is now closed. I will turn it over to city council for their action.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance number 25-13 authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the year 2026 tax year.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Navarro Gomez for city council adopt ordinance number 2025-13 authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2026 tax year. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for doing your work for the last, probably every day you show up, but the hard, the harder work with every department for the last six, seven months, I guess, so.
Thank you for the heavy lifting that, that mayor and council had to do on this. I know it's, nobody takes tax increases lightly and it's tough decisions, so appreciate that from the budget side of things. And at this point, I guess kind of what you see on our website as far as the budget is probably what you'll get in two weeks, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Reports? Nothing from me. I'm going to do no report, report.
Ditto on that, Mayor.
Anybody have anything?
We had a, this week, we had a meeting of the Columbia River Homeless Housing Task Force and we'll be meeting again probably January or February, correct? To review some items that have come up. Our contracts were all passed at this point.
I got invited to participate for the task force for the transportation safety plan. And basically, well, today we met virtual and it's just about talking about accidents, collisions, we're at, with pinpoints in Wenatchee and we're going to get together for the next, four times in the next year. And it's pretty interesting how we saw what, what can we do to avoid accidents and collisions in Wenatchee.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank everyone for, who came up and voted and being involved, really honored, looking forward to another term as a city council member. Congratulations to all those who were elected as well. This Monday at PIBIS, 6 to 8, you heard us talk about the Masawa City Organization last week, they're doing a viewing of Miss Vidal from 6 to 8. And if anyone wants to learn more or get involved with, with that organization, I recommend you go do that.
If nothing else, we could adjourn. I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I can, I can. Right, good.
All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.